Okay, good evening. It's six thirty. I'm gonna call order meeting number eighteen seventy-two of the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We have our forum, we have all five regular members plus an alternate member. For added agenda items, we have one item. It is a request from Penske Trucking on their erosion and sediment control bond. So we're going to discuss this under our correspondence page. Okay, legal notices. There were two legal notices. First one was the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town website. P Z twenty twenty-four dash zero five. The applicant owner is the town of East Windsor requesting a text amendment to section five oh seven point six. Allowed uses warehouse point design district that East Windsor zoning regulations. A full copy of the application is available on our planning zone commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This was posted in Journal Inquirer on April twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and then on April nineteenth, twenty twenty. Second legal notice was the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P M. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. This is P Z twenty twenty-four dash zero six. The applicant owner is the town of East Windsor Housing Authority, East Windsor Housing Authority and Housing Authority of East Windsor. Is requesting a zone change from M one and R two to A R H D for properties located on reservoir. Assessors map zero seven eight, block fifty-six, lot zero three two and zero three eight. Full copy of the application is available on the planning and zoning commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting, provide verbal or written comments regarding the application. This was posted in Journal Inquirer on April twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and again on April nineteenth. We are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson eighty-nine main. Uh, in the eighties, I was on a board, sitting up there. I wanna thank you all for giving up what you give up to be here, to do our work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, and we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have our minutes from the April ninth regular meetings. Does anyone have any alterations or corrections?
And you thought we were line fifty-one. Where it references a January twenty-third, twenty-four meeting, and then it goes on to be meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth. So I think the header is wrong.
Yep, line fifty-one needs to be corrected to March nineteen.
Um. Then, when we look at line one thirteen. When we were talking about things that were not always enforced. And it says lawn car sales. Is that right? Were we talking lawn sales, like tag sales, or cars parked on lawns?
Cars parked on residential lawns, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Lawn car sales.
It's that.
Um.
I remember talking about your accents.
That's what I thought you were talking about. So I would apply.
So maybe we remove the word car?
That's what I was thinking, but. Um.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll read back to them.
Then on line one twenty. It says the survey is available at East Windsor High School. Is that? No, I didn't think so. I knew it was by QR code and it was on.
We mentioned the high school because they have the ticker message.
The, it was being noticed on the electronic board.
Okay. Yeah, it's, instead of being available is advertised?
Um. How about we change the words? Yeah, or advertised.
That's all that I was struggling.
Okay. Does anyone else have any corrections or comments?
No, sir.
Okay. There's no other modifications. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen seventy-one held Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four with line fifty-one corrected to reflect it was March twenty-sixth meeting, not the January twenty-third meeting. In line one thirteen, the word car should be stricken. And in line one nineteen, instead of available, um, replace that with advertised.
Good. You have a motion to approve the minutes. Do you have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there are no receipt of applications, nothing under performance bonds, no continued public hearings. So we will go into our new public hearings. First one being P Z twenty twenty-three zero five, zone change of town of East Windsor text amendment to section five oh seven point six. Allowed uses in the warehouse point zoning regulations. So in your packets, you have a copy of the use table with the modifications, mostly to the transition zone. There's two modifications to the core. And these were pretty much came out from the public comment when we first presented the whole warehouse point zone districts.
Correct. The two other changes, the veterinary clinics and daycare, uh, we changed those because we require special use permits for those in general. So we just, we picked those up as well. And made it special use for both the core and transition. Um, and the others really addressed, um, comments that were made about, um, disruptions to more traditional residential areas.
Activated the resident.
Yep, and so we've, we've you as a board approved the map of the zones at the last meeting, which kind of curtailed, it pulled out some of those neighborhood areas. And then this is just another one there of answering what folks were concerned about.
So anything big is going to come for us, basically.
Anything in the, yeah. Okay, does anyone on board have any questions or concerns with these changes?
Consistent with what we've discussed, but I would be interested in hearing from the public if there's any comments.
Anyone else?
No, sir.
Um. Commissioners received the product comments.
And you have the letter from products saying that it is compliance with the, is one more. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this?
Paul Anderson eighty-nine main, pretty broad, which is just a minor saying, but I'm gonna get it done for the video. And, um, Michael, when you first introduced it, you said P Z twenty twenty-three oh five. When you read it, it's twenty twenty-three oh five. Just for clarity purposes.
Thank, thank you for that correction.
Otherwise, yeah, let's do it.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on this application? Yeah, I think we've kind of talked about this in conjunction with the previous application, but it's all good. So, um, nobody else has any comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty-four dash five. The modification of the use table in section five oh seven point six. To tighten requirements in the transition zone.
Motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by name. Any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, um, I think we can, everybody's comfortable. I think we can go ahead and vote on this application. Yep. Okay. If there's anything else they want to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to approve, approve this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application P Z twenty twenty-four slash five. The town of East Windsor text amendment to section five oh seven point six allowed uses in the warehouse point design district of East Windsor zoning regulations. Finding that the establishment of the warehouse point design district and accompanying zoning regulations is directly tied to chapter three of the East Windsor Plan Conservation Development, Guiding Development, which specifies defining village areas and promoting transit oriented development and or village zoning in Warehouse Point. And that the changes are consistent with what we heard in the public hearing.
Do you have a motion to approve the application? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Next public hearing we have is P Z twenty twenty-four dash zero six. Town of East Windsor Housing Authority, East Windsor Housing Authority and Housing Authority of East Windsor requesting a zone change from M one, R two to A R H D for property located on the assessors map of zero seven eight, block fifty-six, lots thirty-two and thirty-two. Who's here to speak on behalf of this?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jay Esri, Jay Arluso, and associate here representing the East Windsor Housing Authority with this application for zone change. And I think everybody in your packet probably has a copy of the actual application itself. I've got some more handout materials here I'm gonna give you. Um, would it be possible to put up the G I S just to show the area on reservoir? I think it's probably gonna be a little easier for the public and everybody to see it versus without up here, it's a smaller scale. I think it'd be easier to see if we can do that.
Yeah. All right. Letting get far.
While she's trying to get that up, um, this application is, involves two parcels of land that front on reservoir. Uh, we're just east of the intersection of reservoir with Windsorville Road, uh, more or less behind the town hall there almost, I guess. And before we get to Reservoir Park, so as soon as we take that left and head down Reservoir from the intersection, uh, right around the corner is the first parcel, which is approximately six acres. Contiguous with the housing authority property to the north. The next parcel is a little further down. It's approximately eight acres. And again, contiguous with the housing authority property again to the north. And then if we continue further down the road, we get to the park, uh, Reservoir Park property, that's a flooding property to this on the east. So it's contiguous again on north to the existing housing authority property. There's one of the parcels right there where the hand is. And correct, and then the other one there. So you've got six acres and about eight acres of land, and then you can see the housing over here, Park Hill parcel just to the north of this. So these are two parcels that have been acquired by the housing authority within the last, and I'm gonna say probably seven or eight years, um, and I'm not positive on the timeframe, but both of those have been, they, uh, one of the parcels, the one to the east where the hand currently is located, actually had a deed restriction on it, which we'll talk a little bit about, uh, as we get into the application, because I think it's per diocesan. We'll talk about that a little bit. But the housing authority itself was created back in nineteen sixty-seven, I believe it was fifteen. And it was an agreement between, at the time, the town of East Windsor and what is now called the East Windsor Housing Authority, and it was an agreement that came about as they identified the need for some affordable housing for the seniors who lived here in the town of East Windsor at the time. And it was, there was actually three agreements. There was the first one in sixty-seven, and there were two more subsequently, which were phases of development. So there was a phase one of development, ex amount of units of phase two, and a phase three, and the agreements were basically the same as they went through. There were agreements between the authority and the board selection at the top of East Windsor as this thing moved forward. Um, currently, the, the authority operates, I think, eight four units. And I'm, pardon me, just move back a little bit. Linda Collins, who was the executive director, is sitting here, and I'm looking at her, and she's shaking her head yes, if I didn't move back the number right. But I wanted to let you know, she's here, John Burnup was one of the board members. And there may be some other board members here, I'm not sure, because I don't know everybody, but at any rate, um, I wanted to introduce Linda, and there's probably gonna be some questions for others moving forward through this, because she's the one that knows all the, all the details in the way, more so than I do. So as I said, the housing authority was created in sixty-seven, an agreement between the town and the town, uh, the authority and the town of East Windsor. And that's essentially how it works today. They have five board members. They are appointed by the board selecting, and they have five year terms, if I'm not mistaken. And, and they're in charge along with Linda, basically, Linda, the authority, and providing the services. All of the authority also, uh, gives to its, uh, residents. So this is an application to allow them to escape. In order to do that, we've gotta change this on, there's two zones there currently. One of them is the R two residential zone, and the second zone is an emsment manufacturing zone, which might sound a little odd, why is that there and how did it get there? Some of you on the board are gonna remember this, but when we go back in time and look at East Windsor, basically, the entire area and brought, we're going back down to the south either line, and they follow the way up to the end field, where it was adjacent to the railroad, much of it was going into back. A lot of the rail line is gonna bring to the industry, and most of those areas are also manufacturing. A lot of them have since been changed. But there's a couple of redundant pieces that are located here with on these parcels that is still zone manufacturing, and that has to do with the railroad back in the days. And you get further south in here, and you get down towards plantation, the area where the, uh, solar farms going in, and all of that was zone manufactured industrial. And much of the facilities, but a lot of it's been changed. But there's still a couple of pieces here. The other part of it is zone R two, which is your residential zone, which requires twenty thousand square foot lots. So in order for the authority to develop this under, uh, the H R D, uh, we need a zone change to create the zone. What they would do subsequently here is if we are successful in achieving the zone change, we would go over and we'd put together some conceptual designs, uh, and then look for funding to try and get this project off the ground. Obviously, there's a lot of money required to put this together and build these units and the infrastructure. Uh, and in order to be able to even apply for the funding, it's gonna require us to get this own change as we move forward. So all of that said, I think let's get into a little bit of the nuts and bolts of the actual application. So I think everybody probably has a copy of the patient package and the application itself. And it's pretty standard, as we've seen many of us before, in terms of different types of zone changes for different areas. This one would allow the expansion of the age restricted, uh, housing, which our park hill provides. Um, there's some other things that we look at in here and, and the questions that are asked in terms of the zone change, they want to know distances to schools, churches, public buildings, playgrounds, uh, hospitals, and daycare facilities. Well, some of these, we built these out, we're telling you what's there. You've got the Broadwood Elementary School, St. Catherine's Church, you've got the town hall, and you've got the East Windsor Park. And I think those are important features, some of these, when we start talking about this particular location and Park Hill and how Park Hill functions. And if you look at the P O C D, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we move into this. One of the things that they're looking for is for this type of housing is, is the area of the village district, which this is in the Broadwood Village, basically. And they like to have certain things available to the residents. Here, we do have a lot of available services to the residents. We've got a park down the street. We've got a sidewalk. You've got a grant to build the sidewalks, which are gonna go in that reservoir, to allow access from Windsorville up and down Windsorville, back down Old Ellington Road, down to the school, all the way down Reservoir to uh, let's see. Skinner, past Skinner, all the way to the next thing, which I carry in the name.
And so.
Okay, and it'll create a tire loop all the way over deep, and then back down into the center of the park. Uh, that's been designed, is funded, and I think it's already a little bit, that has not, but if, so that promotes or helps, at least in this accessibility for walkability. They'd be able to get to the park. They'd be able to get across the street to the dark park. They'd be able to get across the street to the Good and Garden. We could go the other way. We could walk down into Broadwood. We've got the town hall. We've got St. Catherine's Church. We've got the congregation church, which is a little further down the street. We've got a convenience store. We've got multiple restaurants. Uh, we've got the opera house. So it is somewhat walkable, depending on, on the ability of the residents, but, uh, it's, it's got a lot of things that in other areas you wouldn't have. We have the infrastructure. We've got sanitary sewers. Obviously, we've got electric. We've got gas. We've got a water main that is currently being designed, and there's a grant that is paid for for construction. We're just gonna bring water up Old Ellington. It's gonna take care of all of School Hill, which is Alina and getting current under the name of the other street. It's gonna continue on up. It's gonna come down Windsorville, and it's gonna go into Park Hill. So there will be new water, so it's gonna get water. It's currently working on that now as we speak. And the funding gets in place to bring the water to this location, which will also be used for this development. So, and, and that's something that's talked about in your, in your zone change application, requirements, uh, in his own regulations. And we've talked a little bit more about that as we look through it. So in looking at the location and its proximity to services, it's, it's a pretty good location in terms of where it is located. Uh. The P O C D talks about a number of things in the meeting. I've got some he and nuts here that I wanted to give you. Here, wait, here, a second. Pull out a paper. I'll put on the screen on the G I F, but I've got a printout here. Maybe. Take one of those, pass them down. So this is a copy of the G I S that, that's, thank you. There's a planometric bearing there, and then there's a copy of the aerial with the photograph turned on, so you can kind of get an idea of the R's. Looking at it, but some of the things that are, that we need to talk about, that are in your requirements for a zone change, there was a number of things that you need to consider. And in your packets, I have put in there basically, uh, a section of the regulations, zoning regulations, and it's in the page that starts out town of East Windsor Housing Authority, zoning the job application, supported documentation. And that should be in there in the packets. And what the, uh, what the regulations say in this particular section is you need to consider certain things before you can grant a zone change, and you need to look at certain things. And there's a number of them that they talk about. The first one is is there a reasonable need for such housing in the town of East Windsor? And again, in your packets, there's a, a letter or a, about from Linda Collins, and it talks a little bit about what the authority does, what services they provide, but I think the most important thing is that they provide, uh, units for seniors, sixty-two and over, and people under sixty, disabilities. They currently have a waiting list of about ninety adults. Uh, they only have eighty-four units. It typically takes about two years to get through this list and get a unit, and the list pretty much focuses around ninety, most of the time. So when the housing authority was created and been talked about, the need, the need is still here. It hasn't changed. They've got eighty-four units. They've got a waiting list of ninety some odd people. It takes about two years to get your way down through the list, and you look at, so, so, and units at this location. They do provide other services. They have a resident staff coordinator, uh, who can help residents in terms of style ride, wheels on wheels, home care, and all those different types of things that they can need coordinated through the authority and through their folks. Um, they do have a community room, uh, and they do sponsor different types of events, things for the residents that live there, and that goes on, uh, uh, annually, depending on what the, what type of functions they have. And if I've been there at different times, sometimes this commission, or other commission sent meetings over there in the community room. I think I was there once at Halloween. It was all decorated for Halloween. I was there once at Easter time. It's all decorated for Easter. So they, they do provide a, a lot of different things for the folks who live there. So that's one of the things that, that you need to consider in the Z U R uh, zoning regulations. Is there a need? Certainly, it appears that there is a need. Uh zoning regulations, is there a need? Certainly it appears that there is a need. And uh also, when we look and we go down through item one B, is the site located. Within an area identified as a village area, look at the P O C D. And I've included that in the packet too, like that copy of the page in the P O C D that shows. The village area mapping, this is within the the village of Broadbrook, it does fall within the village area, which is required. Uh this type of zone and zone change, so it does mean that uh particular requirement. And it's again, it's it's pages thirty-four and forty-two, it's in the package. Uh is the land physically suited for the proposed use? And the subject parcels are suited for development for additional housing units as they are now located on floodplain and contain regaining soils, sandy gravity soils for the most part. Have only a minimum area of steep slopes. And a small area of wetland soils, which is on the east side adjacent to uh. Reservoir Park in the in the Brooklyn Park, so the the land is suitable. Uh does have all the infrastructure that you need in order to support uh future development. Any adverse environmental impacts and. As in any type of site development, uh any plants that are developed, we do consider environmental impacts, obviously, in the site design, we're always considering environmental impacts, whether they be. Uh something that has to do with wetlands or flooding or storm drainage, all those types of things are considered. We don't anticipate any permanent environmental impacts at this particular site. Uh there are temporary impacts, those are those are true in any type of a development project, you know, you're going to have construction noise. Uh it's going to go on for a certain amount of time, uh there will be. Probably some additional traffic or construction vehicles and and bringing in materials and this type of thing. Uh but we don't anticipate any type of uh permanent environmental impacts. And so again, I I think we're we're pretty good when it comes to that particular uh state. Will there be any adverse in- impacts or effects on existing in the area? And here, it's the opinion of the applicant, expansion of the project for the community, will not have a significant impact on the existing in the area. They're already there, they've been there since the sixties. Uh I don't think there's been any real issues in terms of what goes on at Park Hill. I don't think the police department is up there once a week, but I don't think they have a lot of problems there. Uh I think it's a pretty well run facility there, and certainly I don't think that this. Expansion should have happened and created anything different of what we're used to seeing at Park Hill. The next one, which is item one, one dash F. Talks about surrounding property values. We had a discussion this board on another application not too long ago, when that question came. And and I think we came to the conclusion that there's no real answer to that question, we don't know what effect this might have on property values. Uh the one thing that I can say is that since COVID. Property values have shot up tremendously, I think we've all seen it. Uh in terms of what comes up on the market, what some of the rights are and what things are sold for. Would make us, some of us probably scratch our head and think, that might be a good time to sell our house, we could probably do very well, except I don't know where you're going to go, because you're going to pay a lot of money for anything else you might buy. Unless you want to go downtown. But property values have increased substantially, and I think. Probably some of you have seen it as I have at my house, and if you've had a recent reval, you've got your new tax bill. You looked at it, scratched your head, but wow, how could my house be worth that much money? But the property values have shot up. What effect would this have on a property value? I I don't know the answer to that, I answer that, I'm not sure there is an answer. I think that was the conclusion we came to in an application we had a year and a half or so ago, talking about this. Impacts, let's see, one G, impacts will not adversely affect. The capacity of the presently proposed building, street drainage systems, sidewalks and other infrastructure. And we talked a little bit about that, uh all the infrastructure is in place here to support this. Sidewalks are out the bid and going to be put in to help service this. And I don't think there are going to be any issues at all with the. Providing sewer service, uh providing water service, providing gas service, electric service, all the utilities that we are present for to support. Uh this type of project, so we don't see any issues with that. So those are some of the things that you need to consider, and that's right in your zone regulations, when it comes to zone change, it talks about all those things. And I just wanted to to run through them quickly, and you've got them in your packet, and you can see, you can say it's all the time. You saw in this letter that was put together, it talks a little bit about Park Hill, the D and so forth, and services they provide. And then you've got the pieces of the P O C D that I included. In your packets, and the next page is is interesting, we look at page forty-six of the P O C D, and there's some items that are highlighted here. And. One of the things that it talks about is. Actions required, and this was for future living use development, one of the things that came up, and this is your twenty sixteen P O C D. Says we shouldn't be investigating promoting development of affordable, targeted assisted. Living long-term care, longer care facilities for the elderly, so they may age in place with grace, comfort and dignity. And then the first item underneath that, item number one says. Investigate possible properties to promote development of elderly housing opportunities adjacent to Park Hill and Broadbrook. So it's right in your P O C D, it was one of the first things I found as I started. Blowing through it, I highlighted it for you so you could read it, and I think it's important, certainly, and it came up in twenty sixteen as an item that. Should be addressed uh in the future. Um seek opportunities for public-private partnership as it means for development. Uh placement facilities would best be within walking distance of services. Or should be considered as part of the development, we just talked a little bit about that. There's a lot of services available in this location that are probably walkable. Uh we can walk over to the Town Hall, we need to go there, we can walk down to St. Catherine's, and we're going to go to the church, and we can walk down to the congregation church, we could walk to the park, we can walk to the dog park. We can walk to the community garden. We can walk down to the center of town and go to a couple of different pizza restaurants, uh Oriental Restaurant, there's the D M for breakfast and. So on and so forth, there's a convenience store, and there there are things that are available for these residents that are relatively close. So I think in that term, it's a good location. The other thing that is in here is there's a little graph. And there's a little graph that shows the aging population, as much as I hate to say it, I fall in more of a peaks here of the folks around age seventy to seventy-four. Which is right about the timeframe that I think we're looking at right here now, so. Apparently, I made the graph, although I don't hate East Windsor, but uh it was one of the things that the P O C D considered in looking at this, they were looking at the demographic and saying, okay, what's the population of East Windsor and where's it going? Oh, it's getting older, and twenty twenty-five, I think, was about the peak, and we're we're right about there, so. Uh they've identified this need for additional for the housing units at Park Hill. The other thing that's in here is the residential growth guide plan, which is the next pa- uh page. And defines the village area, both of these sites are within the village area, which is required in order to create a zone such as this. The next page is the conceptual Broadbrook village area map. Which is this page, and again. These two parcels are located within the conceptual village area of that. There is one other thing in the. P O C D that. Was somewhat interesting, and we'll talk about that here with regard to one of the parcels. Um and what it is, is. This is on the page, I didn't get it to the cloud, but page thirty-five, it's the residential densities plan, this is in the twenty sixteen P O C D. And in brown in this plan are existing or approved M F D D or A R H zones. And one of our parcels is colored brown. It's as if it already had its own shape, so you don't think it has, you can find that. But it's there, and there's a reason for that. One of these parcels, being the one furthest to the east. Has a land use restriction on it. And this is my understanding, and I don't know if it's fully accurate. Is that the former owner wanted the property to be used to further develop the Park Hill facility. The property was conveyed to the town of East Windsor at some point back in time, and since was conveyed to the Housing Authority in twenty fifteen. And I should have copies here, but if you can pass those down. And this is. A restrictive covenant that was placed on the land when the property was conveyed to the Housing Authority by the power of East Windsor. And basically, what it says is that. The property has to be used for. Disabled housing, means housing for one or more persons that have a physical or mental impairment. Elderly housing, housing for one or more persons aged sixty-two years or older. Low and moderate income means a person or family whose annual income does not exceed eighty percent of the median income. For the East Windsor Connecticut area, as determined by USDA. And veteran housing, means housing for one or more persons who served in the active military. So this piece of land, which is the eight acre piece, is restricted to those uses, which is essentially what the Housing Authority provides. As you read further into the document, page three. And it talks about the term of the declaration. And it says, this declaration of restrictions and obligations contained here in shall continue in perpetuity. Unless sooner terminated by recorded document or instrument signed by the town. So essentially, unless the town would have changed their mind on this, I guess, and that's not going to happen, and this land is slated for. Development by the Housing Authority, provide housing for our elderly. So this is on file on the land records as part of the D into the housing authority, I think it was in twenty eighteen. And I believe that's why on the P O C D, on the land, the property's already coed in as. Active uh for a gold house. The other thing that I've got here for you to take a look at, which. I'm thinking everybody would be somewhat interested in is. There's there's some conceptual plans here for. A building unit, these were developed by uh Dave Holmes. Capital Studio Architects, the Housing Authority hired Dave a couple of years ago to start looking at. Floor plans, building heights, so on and so forth, costs, he's put a lot of work into this. And I got here for you. Some copies of some elevations and some sample floor plans. And it's essentially two different floor plans, there's a two-bedroom unit. And there's a one-bedroom unit, those are on the second page. Of what I'm thinking about that you have. And the two-bedroom units are forty, forty-two associated by thirty. And two bedrooms, kitchen, bath, actually, it's got a half bath, full bath. Uh living room dining area. The one-bedroom units are twenty-eight, say twenty-nine, five, one-four, I believe. Uh so these are a little bit smaller, one full bath, kitchen area, living dining area. So those are really, uh those are like a thousand square feet, probably about eight fifty-nine hundred square feet, you know, so. That's on page two of this, so it gives a feel for what they're thinking about in terms of moving forward, should they give the funds to build this, some change. Special permit, the site might approve, and the like, so. Uh they did do a little bit of planning and the front rendering showed you what one of these buildings could potentially look like to them moving forward. And and as you know, and just for the, I guess, the folks that are here and listening, they're just like. Should the zone change, it doesn't allow the Housing Authority to build it. It just simply creates a zone where they could then go forward, maybe go into a design process, look for funding, but. They can't put a shovel in the ground until they come back here before you apply for a special permit. Uh have another public hearing to say, okay, now we've got some money. And here's what we'd like to build, and I think that's when we really get all the input and feedback from staff, from you, from the public, and. What could be built, where it could be sited, what kind of buffering is going to be required, because there certainly would be buffers. Uh we'll talk a little bit more about traffic and other than those types of things, I'll just touch a little bit on traffic here. The Housing Authority has eighty some odd units and about maybe half of the people have a car, is that accurate?
I would say that's.
Yeah, so about fifty percent of the folks who live there have a car. Um most of them are retired, they all drive their cars, and then, you know, when we talk about single-family residential. We talk about ten trips per day is probably the average, you know, for folks who've got their three or four bedroom house, they've got, and you wanted to do kids. And you know, you're going to soccer, you're going to this, you're going to that, you're going to school, you're going here, and the guest truck comes, the FedEx truck comes, it's ten trips a day. That doesn't happen at the Housing Authority, these these folks don't go out as much, most of them don't work. Uh a lot of them have a car, they're looking for. The authority to set up for them to get a ride, whether they've got to go to the doctor's appointment, and then they go shopping, or whatever they're doing. So it doesn't generate the kind of traffic that we would see in a normal apartment complex or a single-family residential subdivision, it's much different than that one, it's much less traffic volume. Similar to what we talked about, I'm not sure who was there. When we came in with the Calamarn project over on North Road. Age-restricted market rate apartments, I think those were. Fifty-five, I don't remember exactly, uh and they had a one traffic, they had a lot of information. On the folks that rented their units, and it was similar, uh I would say about half of those folks, they didn't have cars either. Uh they they relied on on transportation, whether it was dial or ride, or whatever it might have been, a lot of them didn't drive. And and there wasn't a lot of traffic generated by that facility, that's what you all know right now, because it's still on hold, but but they're working towards it, they are working on it, I think it's going soon, so. Just a little bit about the traffic, so and and that would certainly. Probably require us to get a traffic study if we come back here with a full application to move forward with some type of a development here, so. That's a basic overview of what the authority is looking for in terms of the zone change here. Uh I'm sure there's a lot of folks here in the public that want to get up and express their opinions and maybe have some questions, but at this point, um. Just one little time, if nobody has anything more to add, I that's that's pretty much it, that sums up my presentation.
We'll start on the board here, Jim, do you have any?
Yeah, you answered a lot of my questions, my first question was going to be, if you're single units or one big unit, obviously, you're going to do one big unit. To me, that's like almost three stories tall, correct?
That's, that building is a two-story building, I believe.
The backside's three.
Uh but again, it's conceptual.
Yeah.
At this point, it might be three, it might be two. It it may not all be attached, it all depends on topography and how we lay it all out, but that was something that they were looking at earlier.
And my rough calculation was this thing was three hundred feet long. Roughly, um buffer is going to be a big issue, you know. I don't know, this predicament, I'm not really familiar with this zone, you don't do a lot of it, so buffer is going to be a huge issue, especially for the residents in the back.
Yeah.
Guys got a house over there and who owns it, no, no buffer feeling on that side, so my concern is neighbors. My biggest concern. Because that was, you know. Because that was, you know, regular A-one land, or R-one land, I should say, and they, uh, you know, they changed that zone, people are buying houses, building houses back there, and they changed the zone. That's my concern with that. Then the other concern I have is, I assume you're gonna come in off a reservoir, I know it's conceptual, you're not really supposed to answer that yet.
There, certainly we would like to provide access to reservoir. One of the things that's that they have now is you've got a, a fairly large complex or community that only has one access.
It's like
And the road's fairly long, and this would solve part of that issue with providing a secondary access out to reservoir, so we would have a through street, and we provide emergency services, two ways to get in and out of the facility. So that's been something that has been talked about at, at Park Hill for a long time, is, you know, how can we make this better in terms of emergency access, and without another piece of land, it was really, really difficult to do, but this would allow that, so there would be another access out to reservoir. That's all I have for now. Larry, commissioners, ask some more questions.
That entire M-one zone that is on, not in the application seems to me, given the railroad tracks are bumped. Um. I don't see that it should be an M-one zone. And I'm wondering about the part of the M-one zone to the north of our hill on if that's not one of the, whatever is cutting through here, I, I guess the railroad tracks. Yeah, see that M-one, and, yeah, is that part of Park Hill? Is that a private company? What is that?
That was that rear lot, right? The real lots? Yeah, it's, it's private property.
Okay.
It's, it's not part of Park Hill. That M-one zone followed the railroad all the way down through there.
No, I remember that.
Yep.
But there's no access to it, they're in the back of the, keep those locked. What would be?
So the two lots that they're talking about is thirty-two and thirty.
Right, but I just look at that and say that whole can we?
That's not part of this application.
Yeah.
Yeah. For sure.
And then like question would be, um, of the two lots that the town has bought for, when giving to Park Hill, uh, one came with the deed restriction, one does not. So it seems like the deed restriction has made the decision for that lot. Is it possible for to just split it and do one at a time? And just do the deed-restricted lot, or is this a project that needs to be in its entirety, all lots?
Well, I, I think the discussions that the, the Authority has had to date involve a multi-phased project, um, including both properties, but it would not be something where they would go in and say they were gonna build a hundred new units or whatever it might be, and they were gonna build the whole thing at once, because we don't think that the funding is gonna be available for that scale of a project. So it would be a phased project. Uh, where would they start? I think they probably would start with the deed-restricted parcel.
Okay.
Uh, because right now, they call the sack, at the end of Park Hill, it ends right at that property line. So it kinda makes sense to continue that through and develop it and bring a driveway back out to reservoir.
That's pretty sweet.
Do you have any thoughts? You would say services were all accessible and easily expanded on power, water?
Yep. The water's coming.
Water's coming.
Brand-new water, I mean.
Okay.
Power is there, sewer is on, there's gas, it's there. Uh. I don't see any issues with any utilities here, I think it's, it's gonna, it's all available.
Okay. And you said sidewalks are?
Sidewalks have been designed, it's funded, and even if it's not out the bid, it's going out very shortly. And that'll basically create a loop
Around reservoir.
All the way around, yeah.
Skinner.
Down reservoir, down, uh.
Skinner.
Skinner.
And Highland, and back.
Back over to Depot, all the way back down Depot, to the center of town, and back up down Old Ellington to the school, where it'll connect up with the other walk downs here. And it's fairly extensive, I don't remember, it's, it's miles, it's not, it's a large project. And it, and it is funded.
Okay.
It was a grant.
All I had was just curious about services, making sure of that.
Stacy?
You know, of course, just looking at it, the deed-restricted area makes sense, I mean, it's just the residences that are locked in. It's really
It is, it makes it, you know, it's a difficult thing, and, and you know, Commissioner Thurst brought up a good point, which we are fully aware of, that substantial buffering is gonna be required to ensure that the residents, you know, are not gonna see or be disturbed, and, and to give you the comfort level that you're likely gonna need to wanna approve something like this.
And then one last, one last question, this lot marked, uh, thirty point seven acres, is also property of the East Windsor Housing Authority? Um, this
Fran's.
Yeah, so this one is, this little guy right here, it also belongs to East Windsor Housing, are you leaving just this place?
Correct, yeah, all of that belongs. Uh, one of the houses is probably gonna stay, that was cut out, which was Fran's old house. Uh, but the rest of the land behind it, and to the east of it, all the way over to the park, would be included in, in the development parcel, there's a change.
Is that the one?
That, that's, yeah, that little house is, is not part of the subject, yeah. That's about three quarters of an acre.
I, I think it's a great idea, but, but again, the doubles in the details on what are we gonna do with those two houses, uh. The concept is absolutely needed, and, and I, I hope, pray that we can get it, but we're gonna have to work on how we're gonna handle it.
That, that will be the part that's probably gonna be the most challenging, should we be back here with an actual application to develop, yes, I agree.
Devil is in the details in this case.
Yes.
Do you have, have you done the math on how, how much acreage will then be like the Park Hill area, like this little community that's kinda happening then?
Park Hill right now is, is approaching thirteen acres, so we're adding another
Another thirteen.
Thirteen, so we're at twenty-six.
Twenty-six acres.
And, and part of the math that we have to do is, is based on, should we get the zone change? Uh, the density or the amount of units that it can hold is based on developable area, which in your regulations is defined with area that is not encumbered by under your flood zone, wetlands, steep slopes. Uh. The three things, so we do have a little bit of wetlands. We have some steep slopes where we're adjacent to Chestnut Brook, because the land falls off pretty quickly. There's no flood zone, so when we look at the total acreage, we can't just take that and say, okay, we've got X amount of units per acre, because we don't really have that, any developable acreage, so it's something less than that. And, and then, in looking at, well, what can it support? You know, the map may tell us, we could put two hundred units there, well, practically, that's never probably gonna happen, because there are buffer requirements that
Setback.
Aren't taken into consideration, and start thinking about densities, and, and there's gonna be a significant buffer requirement uh, along the east side and the west side, where we're bordering those single families.
Well, that's what I was getting at, it could be one building, it could be two, it could be three, it could be
There could, there could be multiple. My guess would be on some of these, um, what I've seen in the past in other towns is, is the buildings are kinda put together in a U shape, and will, so they've got a courtyard in the middle, a service area to the rear. Typically, and, and this is kind of a sometimes creates more paving, and maybe more disturbance and more buffer than we would like, but in this type of a situation with, with a single building, or buildings kind of linked together, the fire department's probably gonna want a hundred and eighty-three access around the whole building, so it, it may be that there'd be a driveway all the way around the back, but there wouldn't be any necessary parking or anything there, but it adds even more buffer than you will, but you've got a driveway so that we can get emergency vehicles around the building, then we've got more buffering, green space, and it ends up moving the building further away from property line, but they, you know, when we start looking at, how many units could we really fit? That all plays into it as well, because I'm sure they're gonna want twenty access on these buildings. Because they have limited access now, what's already there, and there's a lot of units there. They only have access to the fronts.
Jay, is there any estimate? I, perhaps you can't answer this system. Initially, how many will be built?
I think they, and again, they didn't, they didn't consider the developable area, but the number, I think the architect we're working with was somewhere around a hundred and fifty, but
Hundred and fifty.
But that's just looking at math, the hundreds, and it's left
Hundred and fifty units, all that wants to be built?
No, no.
My question is
Multiple phases.
Yeah. Do you have any idea on the phases?
In the first phase, which would probably be the piece to the east, um, maybe forty to fifty, I can guess, and that's a guess.
They're saying there's a consistent demand for about ninety, like
They've got a ninety waiting list, a little over ninety, but it seems to stay right there. So there's eighty-four now, maybe we had half as many again, yeah, we're somewhere thereabouts.
And, and Jay, you've been very good answering a lot of questions that really don't pertain to this application, because right now we're talking about the zone change, not really what you're gonna develop, how you're gonna build it, and when you're gonna build it.
Right, but those are all questions.
I understand, but thank you for answering those, fellas. Um, questions I have is, I, you may not have the answer to this, but wouldn't it have made sense to change the zoning right when the tour land was transferred, and the deed was written restricted? That would have been an ideal time to change the zone then, saying, well, this is the only thing, we can use it.
I suppose, I mean, it's a good point, and, and when, when they put the P O C D together, uh, the consultant at the town was using, and they recognized that fact then, and said, you know, maybe they're gonna change the zone, but this is deed-restricted, and on the bus, Park Hill, this is the only thing they can do with it.
Nothing else you can use it, other than that, or, or open space, that's it.
Yeah, exactly.
Then the only other thing I had was, um, you know, people are concerned about, you know, butters and buffers and things like that, but the existing Park Hill, are you aware of any complaints or any issues? Any of butter, does that have any issues with what's going on there currently?
I asked Linda that question a couple of weeks ago, before we came here, and I simply said, are there, do you have any issues in the past? Do you, you know, does the police department come every other week? Is there?
At all?
Do you have problem, folks? And, and her answer was, no.
Very quiet.
It's pretty quiet.
They were very quiet.
That's usually when, when people have issues, it's usually noise, or light, or things like that, from their butters, and I, I don't see this development as having those issues. Suzanne, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, just circling back to, um, it's the zone change portion of the process. Um, and Jay, you had mentioned that they would be coming up with conceptuals to use for, um, seeking grants, funding, that, you know, that's where the traction will come from, right? Um. And as I looked at the application and compared with the affordable housing plan that we have on record, there is mention of expansion to Park Hill in that document as well. Um, as the P O C D, the requirements and the regs, um, have been satisfied with the application for the zone change. And as it's already been said, when an application comes through, if the zone change passes, um, then it'll be really, um, focused on the layout. The harmony with the surrounding areas.
Uh, one of the things, as I had mentioned, that we do have to do in order seek funding, is we do have to put together perceptual layout plans. Uh, we do have to put together construction cost estimates for site work, infrastructure, and building costs, because when when we apply, I mean, well, how much money, a hundred dollars or ten million dollars? So, certainly we could share, and I think would be a good idea, informally to share those with you as we're working through that, to get some feedback from planning and zoning um, as to what you think on how we may lay it out initially. And what you think is good, maybe what's not good, so we can tweak it. And, because it's probably gonna affect the number of units and the cost per construction. As it moves forward, I think it's probably a good idea to come back to you, even with conceptual plans, with an informal, not necessarily an application, but here's where we are, and this is what we think we wanna do. Here's what we think it might cost, and here's how the phasing might work, and here's how the buffers might work, and to get some feedback from you early on, before we even submit for funding.
Well, I, I think that's a great idea, this way it shows transparency, you know, what you guys are up to, and what's going on, so nobody's blindsided. Especially the neighbors.
And it will save you the, the hassle of going back, having revision after revision.
It should make it easier when the time comes, I would think, yeah.
And better your chances
Yeah.
Getting an award.
But it all comes back to the dollars.
It does.
Interest rates are high, funding may be tight. We see a lot of things that come before us that never
They'll never happen. And this, this could be one of those, it could be years and years and years before anything ever happens.
Anyone else on the board have anything else they'd like to ask? Okay, so this is a public hearing, if anyone in the audience would like to speak on this? I, I'd please ask that you come up to the podium and sign in on our sheet.
Uh, Kiki Agaloff, one twenty-five Depot Street. So, um, I, Park Hill needs an expansion. Um, it serves, uh, low-income seniors and disabled folks. I, I'm in support of expanding it to certain types of veterans, uh, homeless veterans or low-income veterans. Um, I'm not thrilled with the deed restriction that might allow low to moderate income housing. I don't think we need that over there, there's plenty of low to moderate income housing in town, and I'm concerned that the deed restriction could also be lifted, it sounds like by consent of the town, so that doesn't sound like a permanent, um, deed restriction. And so that worries me a little bit. Um, so I wanna talk about the zone change, so, cause I'm, and, and again, I think anything that gets done here, I'm, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of an expansion for the current uses, as I just said, and I think it has to be a hundred percent consistent with protecting the neighbors, that's a that's like bowls down, where the properties, it all sinks down, and anybody that lives in those homes is gonna see it. Even with buffers, it's gonna be, has, have to be really done carefully to make sure that it's consistent with that neighborhood. And I, I live on Depot Street, I walk there all the time, and I know exactly what we're talking about. The, um, you really, I wish we had a zone for Park Hill. I wish we had a Park Hill Housing District, because then it would say the district is for low-income seniors, disabled people, and whatever we do for veterans. This is not, the current zone is different. This is the AR zone, um, for, um, age-restricted, uh, zones, and there's three categories there, as far as I can tell, and I'm not an expert at this, and you probably have it all covered. I'm just giving my, this is my own, my own naive opinion about things and, and my concern. Um, it looks like you can have age-assisted living community there. You can put an assisted living home in there, age fifty-five and older, like a big assisted living complex, that could go in there. And I don't, I think that's completely inappropriate for that part of, uh, Broadbrook in that area. So assisted, and they're not proposing it, I'm not saying they are, but if you change the zone, then you could put assisted living in that zone. And then there's a managed residential community, which is, and that's fifty five or older, managed residential community is fifty five or older. Private residential units, but they also have a complement of services. Not healthcare services, but other services wrapping around it. I really don't have an issue for that for low income seniors or disabled people. Great, let's get services wrapped around all these people, that's perfect. But that's not what it says right now, this is only for fifty five and older, it doesn't mention disabled people at all. In fact, the A R, the age restricted zone doesn't mention anything about disabled people or veterans. And the one that this does fit is called Active Adult Housing, which is, uh, dwelling units for elderly occupancy. Um, says elderly, and it's for fifty five or older, which is attached or not, could not attach, that's kind of what we have right now, is the. Is the adult active housing, doesn't say anything about disabled people. So the zone that exists for for A R is really kind of like for fifty five and older. Like we have on, uh, Kalamar, which is kind of a disaster, sitting there unused in the area, I think that's a disaster. And then we have, uh, well, my personal opinion, it's not, it's not happened yet, okay, maybe it'll, maybe it'll happen in the future, maybe it'd be good for people fifty five and older, God bless them. We need, you know, I'm over fifty five, uh, and and, uh, we all need housing. Um, but that's that, that's not income restricted housing. And I want to see that Park Hill expansion is income restricted housing, and I like to see no assisted living over there, that's not the right location for assisted living. My opinion, we have them in South Windsor, all over the place and other areas, and. I like to see a replica of confinement to Park Hill expansion. And so I'm concerned about a zone change where if it turns out they can't build it, and then they have these parcels, and they've been approved for a zone change, we could have something else in there. And I particularly don't want low to moderate income housing. In that area, nothing against low to moderate income people, but we have a lot of that in town, and the quality of that housing tends to be. Really less quality and they don't last, so I'm, I have issues, but that's not really before you. I don't think the zone is really adequate for. The Park Hill expansion, and I I don't, I'm not suggesting that they get a new zone or you create a new zone, but it'd almost be better if you created a specific zone for this. So that when you approve this, zone change, you're, you're putting it right in exactly where it needs to be. And the current zone doesn't allow for for disabled people at all right now, and it said nothing about, um, income restrictions, so that's my concerns, thanks.
Who else?
Hey, my name is Paul Anderson. I wear quite a few hats in this town, I'm involved with a lot of things, I'm not going to go over a list. But one of the things I'm involved in is the Broadbrook Library, and the president of the Broadbrook Library. That was not an amenity that was brought up, but that's within walking distance of Park Hill, and people do exactly that. They don't go to Warehouse Point Library, no criticism, it's a wonderful library, but for them, it's not convenient. So that's another in the village of Broadbrook amenity, I think, has to be considered. And, uh, the other thing, uh, was the. Waiting list, I heard a number roughly ninety plus. I know a number of people who haven't even bothered getting on the waiting list because the waiting list is so long. They don't waste their time because they figured by the time it shows up. It won't matter anymore, so they're not even putting their name in the bucket. That's not a fault of Park Hill, they're open to this all the time. Get on the list and you have an opportunity, but there's people that get discouraged and they don't bother. So. Having more units available makes a waiting list more valuable. There's a lot of people in town that could use. A unit there, and they don't have that option today. So I think that's an important factor. I realize this is zone change, but, and there may be issues with the zone, whatever. But I don't know how you're ever going to expand Park Hill without something, so I think we need to consider that very seriously. So I'm generally in favor, the details come after the fact, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm from, um, I'm East Caribbean Melrose. Um, I have a couple of questions, one pertains to the meetings in this room in general. Um, I have a traumatic brain injury, I have twenty four seven three sixty five ringing in my head, and I have a very difficult time hearing. Um, I'm not a very loud speaker myself, I'm always, um, asked to speak up. But I cannot hear and I cannot, um, um, differentiate words. When I'm listening to you people, you're, um, you especially are soft spoken, you are soft spoken, I I can't hear them. I'm not sitting at the very back of the room, but, you know, I could probably take a front seat, but. Um, this has been brought up numerous times at the town hall and during, um, public meetings. It's very difficult to hear people, it's very difficult to hear the speakers, um. She sits with her back to us, speaking, you know, addressing you guys, and it's very difficult to hear you. Um, and speakers also address you, uh, you know, as it should be, but they're very difficult to hear because you're speaking with your back to us. Um, I I I have a very difficult time differentiating words, trying to hear people. Um, I've asked for, um, different amplification, um, different, um. Speakers or something in the room, um, I'm not the only one that's done it, I realize there are a few of us that have complained about it, but, um. I I don't know what to do, I want to participate in town meetings, I want to hear what people have to say, I want to, um. You know, hear what you guys have to say especially, but it's very, very difficult for me, um.
Okay, I'll I'll apologize for that, I mean, the room is wired for sound, and there are ceiling speakers that are installed here, so to. Try to, you know, extend the volume, I I wish you'd just let us know. And maybe we can make an adjustment to the audio system to increase the volume, because. That has been addressed and it has been installed in this room, so there are speakers installed, uh, to help people in the back of the room to hear things.
I think it's a lot, because I was tampered with that one time, and.
Gotcha, so. I will make a request to either have access to that, or that we can do a, a sound check in the room prior to to our next meeting.
Thank you, appreciate that very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to say about this project, I'm thrilled and excited for the town for this project, um, I think it's a long time coming, and I think, um. Uh, housing, you know, in general in state Connecticut is in a crisis mode, um, especially trying to accommodate seniors and low income people. Um, I'm not quite a senior yet, but I certainly fall into the low income category being disabled. Um, and I also, um, think that people who I've spoken to about this project. Are, um, intimidated by having low income people coming to town, whether it's people that are from town, that are moving into a, a low income project. Or, um, low income people that will be moving into town, um, they're terrified when they have, um. Low income people in town, that the quality of life is going to change, um, I've heard, um, um. Very undignified in the comments about, um, oh God, now they're going to extend a bus line into town, well, you know. I can't drive because I have a brain injury, I welcome a bus line in town. It's my pro transit program that, uh, just started up, doesn't help me. Um, so I would welcome a bus line in town, but I I've heard very, um. Disparaging, um, undignified, um. Very personal comments about having low income people in town, whether you're a senior, whether you're disabled, whatever your reason is for. Um, being low income, um, just not wanted in town, and I'm hoping. That people will open their minds, open their hearts, and realize that this project is really needed in town. Um, not only because in our, in the state of Connecticut, we're one of the towns that have, um, uh, older. Uh, population, uh, very much aging population, but because of the housing crisis in general. Um, but I do hope people won't let that, um. Their prejudices and biases about low income people, um, regardless of how they got there. Um, influence them either in voting on this or, um, um. Spreading their opinions through town about, uh, how they feel about low income people, um. I declared in quite a few, um, online town Facebook conversations, I'm the person you're talking about. I'm the person you don't want in town, I'm the person you don't want to have access to transportation. I'm the person that if this project does go, I'd be on the application list, you know, um. That's me, I'm sorry that, um, I didn't put myself in this situation, I was hit by uninsured motors. On a job as a, um, mail carrier. Um, and federal workers comp just doesn't like to pay you when you have brain injuries, I I fly to a million different jobs. I'm calling the workplace liability because I have chronic dizziness, I chronically fall and injure myself. Um, nothing I can do about it, you know, that's, that's life, it's been ten years like this, that's life, you know? But, um, it it was very eye opening and very, um. Very disheartening to see so many people not want. A project like this to come to fruition, um, because it would serve low income people and perhaps. Congregate more low income people in this area. Um, a- again, regardless of how they got there, uh, age wise, um, retirement, injury, whatever. Um, I I just plead with anybody who's listening to this online, anybody who's in the audience, and to all of you folks. Uh, please don't let that intimidate the voting or your thinking about this project, because, um. I'm the person this would serve, I'm the person who take advantage of the services and the housing and the price of the housing. Um, and the location, the location is great, um, so please. Take that into consideration when you think about the type of person that would be there. Um, it would probably be somebody just like me, so please take that into consideration. All right, well, that's a point that Keith brought up also, I I tried reading about these properties to prepare myself to come tonight. Um, but I had a very difficult time trying to access information on the properties. Um, when you went to lots thirty two and lot thirty eight, um. If maybe information, um, labeling was one A Park Hill, but then when you try to, you click on it for more information. Um, it noted that there was an error in loading the parcel information. So you couldn't get more information on the parcels, I don't know if anybody can fix that, if anybody else even tried to, um, look at that, um. But that's the way it worked, you could get more information on parcels. And, um, I also tried to, uh, download the applications, so I could look at it before I came to the meeting also. Um, and you have to go into a different Microsoft program, once you click on, click here for the, uh, information. And when you go in there, you have to enter your Microsoft account and your Microsoft password. And when I did that, I was denied access, it said you're being blocked because you tried to, um, access your account too many times, or change your password. So I got out of that and went back into my Microsoft account, and I was allowed access to it, I went back to the town site, and I was told, no. You can't do it, change your password, so I was very uncomfortable with that, I don't know if that's, um. Uh, valid or not, for the town website to ask me to, uh, change my password, then I can access my own Microsoft account.
Yeah, it it shouldn't do that, I don't know why it did that. Um, the property card, when you went to click on the property card information on the G I S, that's a function of the reeval and the. Changing platforms, and for some reason vacant properties didn't get uploaded, we did go talk to the assessors after you called. I know that if you were able to view the application, um, Mr. Ursery had put those property cards in his application.
Okay.
They were so close.
Okay, I did see the property cards, but there was more information you can click on, um, you know, on the top on the left hand side, it gives those four choice or three choices. One is to view the property card, um, it was one of the other ones underneath that. Um, but it said there was an error in loading it.
Yep, I got that error myself.
Okay. And then, let's see, um, oh, is there a timeline for the funding to, um, I'm not sure if I should address it to you or think. Um, uh, timeline and funding for when this project's going to start, is there any general ballpark idea?
I I would guess that it's. Years away, by the time we go through conceptual designs, we start looking at cost estimates and we apply for. Grants and funding, it's, it's many, many, many months out there. I I would think that anything could happen here within two years. I'd say it's going to be more than, it could be substantial.
Maybe we show that we said dirt five years?
Would never be.
Uh, uh, it might never be, if there's no funding available, we can't get any money, then it's all, it's not going to happen. The first thing, and this is, this is like step one right here, so without a zone change, we're, we're, and it's, we're done and over.
I would much rather see money go to this project than if it was possible than to the, um, new municipal centers. Um, I guess that's it, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, doing, Brian Cody. Um, thank you for doing this, uh, hearing tonight and going over all the zoning. Um, I'm not a very good speaker, public speaker, so I'm going to make this really short, um. Thank you for recognizing the neighbors, you know, the properties that, about the. Facility and the concern we have with, you know, um, to me, a commercial building, a multi-story building, which. In my idea is not what I thought Park Hill would be, it'd be more like housing, uh, that's existing there. I don't have anything against expanding Park Hill, I think, um, expanding it and putting into. A more residential housing setting with multiple housings, um, which I'm sure doesn't fit their criteria. With like a hundred and sixty four units is what they're trying to achieve, I believe. Um. That's just to me where that falls into play with the setting, the area, the fields, the Broadbrook field. Would be not a commercial multi-story building versus, um, like a housing style. Um, that's, that's really it, I know, um, your name is, I'm sorry, Keith, he's. Put a lot of that into what he said about, um, the feel of it. The, uh, the other thing is, is a lot of unknowns, um, how do you? How do you, um, approve zoning with like the possibility of this could be, it should be multiple different things? So you approve it on one thing, but it turns out to be another, is my, my question.
I can give you a quick answer on that, it isn't, there would have to be another hearing before any development happens.
Gotcha.
So this is just strictly to allow the property to change, to allow uses, but then there's going to have to be a special use permit. Which then they have to put out all the details of exactly what they plan to do, so to kind of address what Keith was saying too. In the special use permit, we can dictate age restriction, we can dictate, you know, the military status, there's different things that can. That we can dictate in the special use permit.
Gotcha, gotcha. That's it, thank you.
What else? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no. Ju- just a couple of things on some of the comments, and and I think Keith Agaloff made a couple of good points here, there are a lot of things that are allowed under this particular zone. But I think at this point, you know, the folks at Park Hill and Linda and the, and the board. Only intend on creating the same type of of units and and similar type operation to what they already have. Not going to be assisted living, uh, it's not going to be something different than what Park Hill already offers. Um, and and I think it's a good point that he made, because you change the zone, anything could happen, but. As, as Mike just said, you have the ability with a special use permit to restrict what could go in. And but it's their intention just to recreate something similar to what Park Hill already offers, nothing any different than that, it's not assisted living, it's not something different. It's, that's, that's their intention.
So I I'm going to make a comment, John Burnham, one seventy eight Scandic Grove, I'm on the Housing Authority. So this is just step one of a long process. So this is just step one of a long process. We have to get over this hurdle in order to keep going down the trail. It could be a long trail. We have a very dedicated staff. Our new person is here and Marissa's here. She's gonna be our new executive director. Linda's expand as a consultant for us. We have eighty four units up there. There's a lot of happy people up there that are just riding it out, so to speak. It doesn't cause any trouble. The most trouble we get up there is wants to allow smoke detectors. And what else is our next biggest thing? Small detectors. They're senior citizens and they live in a nice, safe place. We should all be so lucky that we'll end up there where our parents are. There it is. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make something clear because I want to be, based on what Jay said, I don't want anyone to think that I, well, I think that the Housing Authority is a very credible organization. I really trust them. I wasn't inferring or saying that they would somehow do something different because they wanted to. I was saying that the change in the zone couldn't potentially allow for that. But as Jay said, you know, they're, John just said, they're extremely credible organization. They have great leadership. They were doing great work and we really need that. I appreciate that. And I don't want anyone with a mistaken impression that I have a criticism of them at all. Okay, and I trust them. Thank you.
Anyone else? Now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty four dash six. The town of East Windsor's Housing Authority Zone Change from M one and R two to ARHD for a property located on Reservoir Avenue, map seventy eight block fifty six, fifty six, lots thirty two and thirty eight.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. We have a second? Second? Any further discussion? Now my call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
So what does the board think? Is there more information? Is there? Do we feel that we've heard enough to make a decision on this?
We've discussed. And all that's on the table right now is the zone change and it will get the city of the zone change passes further scrutiny when a project starts to take shape.
I I would also feel that, you know, the special use permit is truly our ability to hold all the checks and balances and make sure that all the public interests are addressed and that, you know, that exactly. But nothing can start without this first step.
So what about Keith's comments about if the zone sits for a while?
Yeah.
And let's say it isn't go through. What's stopping people from doing?
Well, the underlying deed is the parcel is still being restricted. But then
But the town owns both parts.
The Housing Authority does. If they were, you're talking about if they tried to sell it off. Then I would, I would think that any future development would still have to come for a special use permit before us. So no development can go in there at all without a special use permit. So regardless if it's the Housing Authority or if it's a new entity, they still have to follow the same process. They still have to come before us to get approval for what use they want.
The one thing I don't like that we can't change, I can't stand when I do a zone change and there's no conceptual. I know they don't have to, but it's it's just a it's the way it's always been done. I realize that. And the applicants gone out of their way to show drawings and rendering, which they really don't have to do. So I think there's a lot of transparency there. They're not trying to hide anything. So.
And a lot of it's going to be dictated on how much funding they get and
But it never happens.
Yeah, to go to prospective investors, they have to have something.
Also what the land can support when you add the buffers and when you add all the requirements they're gonna have to meet.
I just want the neighbors to know we're not, you know, just approving something and letting them just do whatever they want. It's checks and balances. Just not gonna put this up tomorrow.
And Jay said no shovel will be dropped.
Not before they come before us and get a
Like the picture.
Right, right.
That may be years before it happens if it even does, if there's no funding.
Okay.
And it's the only zone that we have the option of including something like this, right? That's why it's in the ARHD. That's where Park Hills.
Yeah.
Right, then there's no other Create a new zone. I must have created a new zone.
You'll feel comfortable to, okay, I'm good. Then I'll entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty four dash six. The town of East Windsor Housing Authority Zone Change from M ones to R and R two to ARHD for the property located on Reservoir Avenue, map seventy eight block fifty six, lots thirty two and thirty eight. Finding that the zone change is in alignment with the POCV and recognizing that any development on the site will come back before the commission and require adherence to the regulations and special conditions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, a call for vote. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Yes.
I asked that you guys, please try to be quiet. We have not completed our agenda. All right, so we have no old business or new business to discuss. Under other business, we have our CEO report.
So as I had discussed last time with forty six South Main. Has been referred to legal. One forty South Main Street Rare. That's the area that had the illegal filling. The Wetlands scientist gave a presentation to the wetlands agency. Our findings today, they are working to do a enhancement on site. No, this is one forty rare. It is Chris Spitty's West River Farms that there's ongoing site inspections there with all the houses going up and through two. Trying to stay on top of the segmentation and erosion control.
It's been a year for range, but so.
Yeah, yeah. So we're out there meeting with the builders and
Pardon that, parcel in South Windsor? And pardon East Windsor?
The open space.
The open space.
Oh, okay, but the houses.
Are they cooperating with us?
Yeah, yeah. They wanna get themselves in a good place to get onto the next phase, so they're motivated. This nine north is up at the normal home park up there. There really hasn't been much news on that. Other than the next door neighbor for this woman that left. One forty two South Main, as you know, they have a field. A recent N O B, they came in, they got their site plan modified. Didn't adhere to it and weren't issued an N O B and they're killing that. Don't have enough within sixteen that way. Looks like they're just out there. And then one eighteen Phelps. That notice of violation was issued for unregistered vehicles on that property. And the property owner has also appealed the N O B.
Here on work grounds.
The property owner believes it's not factual. The N O B is And then the new ones down the side. Signs that have been, banners that He has a slew that just taken on the list.
The big one's gonna be the armistice. That's the big one because if that results for a punk, there's not enough following. You can take care of that mess out there.
Yeah, and so in that case all the departments have kind of joined forces. Yeah, so the fire marshal, the building official, the zoning officer, everyone's
There will be drive aisles and everything else. I remember that they worked through it. I don't know if you've been back, you've been back here. So I don't know, the rest of the commission's been back. I've been back. It's a mess.
Man, I have a question. Before I die, are we gonna have any ordinances?
No. It can be a great friend.
Excuse me?
You're talking about for Blake?
I mean, just ordinances in general. What's, what is the status on ordinances?
We call white ordinances, right?
White ordinances, Blake? White ordinances, Frank?
Do we have any ordinances?
We got a slew of ordinances in town. I know the Conservation Commission is working on scenic road ordinance right now. Through scenic road and they're doing some work on open space, I think, trying to find eligible parcels and we did do our draft of the blight ordinance. It didn't pass, as you know.
It will, you know, it just seems to me for thirty years, I've kind of hearing about ordinance system, I haven't gotten too far.
Yeah, I know. We found the original scenic road ordinance recently and saw that in two thousand five, there was a pitch made to the Board of Selectmen and they had concerns over maintenance issues and whatnot and it never went back.
We had scenic sign, we had scenic sign in the park register one time.
Well, I just wondered what the problem is.
Well, I can tell you, yeah, you have to go to town meeting to be passed. And I think that is
So the problem is the, is the residents?
Well, I wouldn't, I
I was here for the blight ordinance and unfortunately, what it seems to be is opposition shows up, supporters don't show up.
Yes, yes.
So what does that mean?
It means unless there's a, you know, somebody organizes people and gets them involved to to want to support an ordinance and show up at the meetings. So it's difficult to get
We as a township do that, if we want the ordinance.
The town can't solicit people to vote for something in a certain
No, they can't. But they can't. It just doesn't make sense.
Even politicians try to
Okay, well, thank you. That was like to see progress all the time. So under correspondence, we're adding this letter from the attorneys representing Kenske Trucking. And what they're asking for is our current regulation calls for a cash bond for their sediment and erosion control. And they're requesting that rather than a cash bond, that they do like a letter of credit or something to that effect. I think they're proposing
Put up ten percent cash and the remainder was a letter of credit.
Isn't that the same company that gave us six thousand dollars when they only loaned six hundred for the permits? And now they only want to give us ten percent cash? Is that the most correct?
It was, they gave us, they overpaid. Yeah, they calculated.
Yeah, instead of six hundred, they gave us six thousand.
It was, yeah, it was, it was a big number. Yeah.
So Ruthanne gave her a copy of the financial guidance that it is within our purview to modify the bonding requirements. We are allowed to do that, no, but we have to approve it and
We've had trouble in the past. We had letters of credit and
So what I, what I propose as a counter is that they take out an insurance policy or something to that effect, something that's a little more tangible, that something that's easily, because a letter of credit just means you're worth that today. Tomorrow, you go out and blow all your money, your letter of credit is shot. Exactly. And it's, it's a matter of is my lawyer better than your lawyer giving me a loophole on the way out of it?
So why are we doing this in the first place? We don't do it for anybody else.
Yeah, that's my question.
So statute says there are certain bond types that statute says commissions can choose to deny or reject in certain bond types, which you cannot. An irrevocable letter of credit is what you would get for any developer because no one's gonna hand the town cash for hundreds of thousands of dollars of road improvements. The bond amount, what's the bond amount there?
It's ninety nine thousand four hundred.
So, so this is a significant site. And so asking them to write a check for the town, a hundred thousand dollars cash seemed a little bit unnecessary. So we're asking the bond a portion of it. So if there's any N S issues, the town have the cash can take work and I wrote bond policy. Most of these bonds that you see for these projects are fifteen or twenty percent of what they're asking for. Asking them to put up a hundred K cash while they're spending the same amount of money on on the building permit and then twenty million bucks on the site and God knows what else. So what we do for Park Site? I would imagine that Park Site didn't have a bond that was even half of that because they didn't have the earthwork at this site.
Yeah, we reduced, but we didn't.
We also didn't have a policy in place. That would have said it had to be cash. So he could have provided a letter of credit or something.
We've had in the past. The years go by and it's impossible to what and then the town gets stuck with the bill.
Well, so you also have to remember that we're not bonding Well, so you also have to remember that we're not bonding public improvements because we can't. So with the subdivision, the road is bonded and if they go to phone to the town, then has to try to collect that money through the road. We are not, we cannot bond for private site improvements. So if this doesn't happen, then the site just dies. It's just like Cal Arms. Someone doesn't build it, the town doesn't step in. So for, this is a hundred thousand specifically for E N S. And it's just to make sure that if there's a big issue, that, that adjacent parcels and whatnot are protected. So they're coming up
What about, I'll say dirt damage to the roads in the vicinity?
Dirt damage to the road would not but the town couldn't say, we think you've damaged our roads, we're gonna call them on. It's, that's, that's a trust me.
Yeah.
I mean, work on it. Yeah. It's a, it's a totally separate issue. Um, so the, under the circumstances in, in the statute, if an irrevocable letter of credit, you have no say, you have to accept it. In this case, you're cer- simply allowing them to split that up and, and not provide it all to us as cash.
So what's your idea?
Well, this thing is there like an insurance policy or something.
He's thinking of a letter, uh like a certificate.
So I think there may be some things you could do in the language, but it's typically an irrevocable letter of credit in the name of the town that does not expire.
Or a fixed dollar.
Correct. So it's not an insurance bond, which is, oh, you need a hundred grand? Okay, you pay us two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, which is, which is a little bit different. And it's not a passbook account, which is what a lot of places used to do. So, so they could provide um a surety bond. So I would, I would think that there's, I, I have to look at the statute to determine the types of bonds that the commission must accept. But I would think if it's one of those, the balance is in the form of one of those.
Well, I, I don't think this is something that we should make a decision on tonight. I, I'd ask that for our next meeting, if you could put it on the agenda and give us our options. Would, would you keep the town most protected?
Ruth, do they have basing?
Well, I know, well, they have a basing. They're gonna build one building, they said, first. I don't think they have a hard base.
So I'm just wondering if they could provide a bond that gives them X amount of disturbance and then when they get to that second building or something, you could say, okay, are we good here? And either transition that bond or they would have to basically double it up.
I wonder, um, because they have to do a ton of regrading up there.
They might, they might do all the site
Do it all at once.
And then, and then do their and I imagine once they're running asphalt, asphalt
The other thing, I'm sorry to be so, but the other thing that we did on a site that had a lot of earthwork and a lot of wetlands and we did the exact same thing. We required a percent of the E cash, which then you could use, but um we also required that they provide weekly E N S reports from the people that are on staff managing the project. So every single week they provided us with, we did the inspections. They had to do um inspections after any significant rain events and provide those reports to us. So um we could track all of the inspections that were happening. So we basically had a record of everything that was going on and we could compare how the site transitioned throughout the project.
Which probably isn't a tough lift for them, because they're gonna need a state permit.
And yeah, they're probably already doing it. But it, but it put them in the position of needing to transmit those to us on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis. And they would show us photos of their issues and how they dealt with it and um it made the commission more comfortable that they were gonna have to keep track of exactly where they were in their sequence without needing to add time or unnecessary costs or pay board. I'm not sure if that helps you in this case, but something we can do.
Well, like I said, I'd like to add it to next meeting agenda and discuss what our options are.
Okay.
I don't think they're not gonna, they're gonna build. It's a big company.
Right.
We also wanna come across as we're, we're, you know, good, you know
Yeah.
Community, exactly. We're willing, we're willing to hear their requests. Okay, um, we have nothing under business meeting and no need for an executive session, so if anyone doesn't have anything else, so I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Right, a commotion, we adjourn.
We have, we have a motion to well, technically Frank tonight
I can't.
You're not Motion is made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my favor. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting
You wanna stay? You don't wanna go home.